We've come together on this special day. To sing our message loud and clear. Looking back, we touched on sorrowful days. Where the future disappears.
You will find...
You will find...
He's alive.
He's alive.
Never wake up in your heart and soul. Don't hesitate.
Don't hesitate.
Cause the world seems cold.
Cause the world seems cold.
Stay in your good heart.
And you'll never, never grow old at all.
Never, 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 never grow. Hearts of fire.
Oh!
Love desire. Hearts of fire. Creates love desire.
Yes, love desire.
Take you higher and higher. To the world you belong. Hearts of fire. Creates love desire. Higher and higher.
Higher, higher, higher.
To your place on the floor. Hearts of fire.
Hearts of fire!
Creates love desire.
I'm gonna come and listen to y'all.
Higher and higher.
Higher and higher.
Hearts of fire. Love desire.
Let me, let me tell you y'all.
Higher and higher.
Higher, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Come on, let me, let me, let me, let me hear you y'all. Oh, let me tell you.
Hearts of fire. Higher and higher. Hearts of fire. Love desire. Higher and higher.
Come together on this special day. Come together.
All of a sudden, we just skip right over and there goes somebody who's moving to adjourn.
Right, okay.
Yeah, no, you don't have to...
We'll count on Dave.
Yeah, you know, all the meetings that have to be adjourned have already been adjourned.
And that's true.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 24th, 2011 meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Manukian, Najarian, Quintero...
Here.
Weaver...
Here.
Mayor Friedman...
Here. Tonight's flag salute is going to be led by Councilmember Quintero.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Let us join our prayers to the prayers of others throughout the United States and the world for the victims of the recent floods and the most recent tornadoes that have brought destruction and disaster to many lives. Pray that the injured are healed, bereaved or comforted, and news reaches those who wait for it. We pray for those engaged in the rescue effort and for their families. May they be blessed with strength, courage, and patience. Let us pray for the homeless and those in need of food and water. We promise to keep them in our thoughts and let us pray that we do all that we can in our power to help them. Be with us now and with all humanity as we strive to mend what has been injured and rebuild what has been destroyed.
What's next, please?
Next, under presentation, sorry, next is my report and agenda for the May 24th, 2011. Regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, May 19, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. And next is presentation and appointments at 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of May 31, 2011.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority to commence at 2:30 for May 31st, we have one business agenda item. Director of Community Development, this is regarding Section 8 waiting list overview. We have no business agenda items for the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. We do have a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Redevelopment Agency to commence after 2:30. Public hearing, Director of Community Development regarding amendments to the general plan, zoning map, downtown specific plan map, town center specific plan, map, and tax amendments in connection with the Americana at Brand expansion. For the evening meeting for the City Council to start at 6:00 P.M., we have a number of consent items. City Clerk regarding legal advertising contracting for the city of Glendale. The Fire Chief, this is regarding the Vertigo Dispatch Fire Station Alerting System upgrade. Director of Public Works, Riverdale Drive Maple Street Neighborhood Greenway Project. General Manager of GWP, amendment to the airway interconnection agreement with the L.A. Department of Water and Power. Under adoption of ordinances, this is an ordinance amending certain sections of the Glendale Municipal Code relating to the qualifications of commissioners serving on the Arts and Culture Commission. We have a couple of action items. Director of Community Services and Parks, this is regarding a new agreement with T-Mobile West Corporation for an existing telecommunications facility at Freeway Park Site A. Director of Public Works, this is regarding modification to the single-family residential sewer use charge. And we have a hearing, Director of Community Development regarding appeal of use variance and standard variance for the Chamleon School located at 4444 Lowell Avenue. And lastly, Director of Public Works regarding vacation of first public alley south of Broadway, east of Isabel Street, and west of existing north-south alley on, this is for the Superior Courts Improvement Project in Glendale. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item four is City Council and Staff Comments.
It's Minutetti?
I just want to say, on Saturday, I attended a get-together. The Armenian community of Tabriz has an annual function at the Glendale Civic and, of course, dinner and speeches, but a particular note is the literally hundreds, almost probably thousands of pictures that they display at the Civic and pictures starting, it looks like probably back in the 1870s, 1880s, all through the Second World War and into modern times. It's just a great event and I always like to point out that people should consider going to this function. It's really an educational experience.
Thank you.
I had, I had requested the chart of accounts for the city of Glendale. I have not received that yet. It's been two weeks. I would like to re-request it.
We have all the budget follow-up items on the list. We'll check on that one first thing tomorrow.
Thank you.
I just have a few items. Yesterday, I attended, along with a few of the staff members from the Redevelopment Agency and Economic Development, what's called the ICSC Convention. And this is a huge conference of, I believe there were about 30,000 people in attendance. And it's basically the retail world, shopping malls, retailers, anybody who sells anything on kind of a national scale is there. And we go every year, the city goes every year in part of its economic development to reach out to different investors, to retailers, to property owners, to leasing agents, to just spread the word about Glendale primarily. And there's a lot of cities there. In fact, they have a huge municipal section where cities do big elaborate booths. We didn't do that. We just set meetings and I believe we had five, five, seven meetings yesterday. So it was a very long and very productive day. And what we were primarily trying to do was to look at some of, first of all, to let these companies know what's happening in Glendale, what's happening with our downtown. And really, to a company, they were, when we went into the meeting, not really always knowing a lot about Glendale, or even if they thought they knew, they weren't very familiar with what had been happening in the last few years. And when we showed them what we've been doing in terms of downtown, the projects that we have that are ongoing or that are underway now, like the Broadway Lofts project, and the projects that we're working on, like the Lemley Theater and the Museum of Neon Art, people were extremely excited. We heard over and over again how impressed they were with the city's economic plan, with what we were doing to revitalize our downtown, that they had seen a lot of cities that were just, where their downtowns were sort of dying a slow death, and they were hoping someone would come in and save them. And they felt that Glendale was being particularly proactive and very, and positive, which was really interesting to hear. And we were identifying for these companies, some of our problem spots or some of our challenges, places like the marketplace and the exchange and the Mann Theater, which is now obsolete and probably will never be a theater again, and sort of saying, these are opportunity sites, you know, for the right companies to come in and, and redevelop or come in and really take a look at what we have in terms of this space and bring something new in. And we had a lot of excitement and we left, I'd say, pretty much every meeting with companies saying, we really want to come and tour this area like next week. When can we come? Can you come and show us around? Because we are really interested in Glendale. So I think it was very productive. We had great meetings. We got a lot of good information about what's happening in other cities, what's happening with, with economic development around the country, what's happening with these types of companies, with retail. And it was, you know, it was just a very productive and very busy day. Mr. Higani, did you want to add anything?
Madam Mayor, yeah, the only thing I can add is that you emphasized already that we did not spend the money to have a booth, but what staff, Economic Development staff did instead, they did some research initially to find the companies that would have interest in Glendale and that whose work would be consistent with the kind of tenant space that we have and the kind of businesses we want to attract. And they targeted these meetings very deliberately for that reason, so that we can connect our property owners with potential tenants in the future and with the kind of businesses we want to attract to Glendale. And one of the areas that we heard a lot of positive remark was not only the way that we're packaging our, our message and how we're using art as an economic development attraction, but things like the package of all the ordinances that you passed for the downtown arts and entertainment district as a means of attracting business and facilitating their arrival and settling in Glendale. They thought, one, one developer in particular said to us that he had met with eight cities thus far by the time we met with him, and nobody had anything similar to that in the way that Glendale has been proactive.
Right. And just to remind people, because when we did the downtown and the arts and entertainment district in particular, we streamlined a lot of our processes to make it easier for companies to move in. So just these initial companies that we reached out to saw the benefit of that and really wanted to take advantage of it. So that's one announcement I wanted to make. And the second, on a sadder note, I would like to adjourn the meeting tonight in the honor of Glendale resident David Gerd Behringer, who passed away on April 21st from injuries suffered as a passenger in a car accident tragically at the age of 23. And this was a young man who really had a wonderful life and had a lot to offer. He was born September 27th, 1987, at Glendale Memorial Hospital, the only child of Zvivi Behringer and Edna Korinski. David grew up in a nonprofit environment as he enjoyed helping his mother with volunteer needs at various organizations and embraced giving back throughout his life. And if any of you know Edna Korinski, she's really somebody who does give at all times. David was an Eagle Scout, having done his Eagle Service project in the city of Glendale by gathering old U.S. flags and coordinating a flag burning ceremony at the Glendale Elks Club. As a product of Glendale Public Schools and a graduate of Glendale High's class of 2005, he attended Purdue University and Glendale Community College. At the time of his passing, David was a junior at Cal State L.A., majoring in communications. Among his career goals was to be an officer with the Glendale City Police Force. David loved hiking, scuba diving, mountain biking, motocross riding, animals, helping people, and volunteering for his church. He was a wonderful rider, had great memories of his Glendale High football buddies, possessed a 1,000 watt smile, and was a friend to many, and he will certainly be missed. With that, what is our next, yes?
I just wanted to add also, Madam Mayor and Council, that I had the opportunity this weekend, as I try to do as often as possible annually, to go to Clark High School and help judge their senior projects. It's about that time when our seniors in our local high schools are approaching graduation. And one of the requirements at Clark High School is to have the seniors participate in a project where they do field work, they provide a research paper. And lastly, on this day, they give presentations, oral presentations, in front of judges, panels between two to four judges, community members, interested parties. And it's about a four to five hour affair from 8:00 in the morning till a little afternoon. And I have to tell you that these kids are very, very impressive. The presentations run the gamut from fine arts to sciences, and it's very impressive what the teachers, the faculty, the administration at Clark High School and their public schools do with these kids. So if anyone is interested in being a judge in the future, they may contact the high school, and I highly urge that they do so.
Thank you. Any other staff announcements? Okay, next item, please.
Next item is consent items, following your routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. On item 5B on the motion, instead of alley, that should read "street vacation."
Okay, Mr. Manukian?
Yes, I would like to pull item 5C, 5D, 5E, 5G, and 5H. And 5B as well.
Five and what as well? Five...
And 5B.
5B as well.
So then we have left 5A and 5H?
5F.
5F and 5H?
I'll move the consent counter. Not H.
Okay, A and F.
A and F.
Okay.
I'll move the remainder that consent counter.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Manukian...
Yes.
Najarian, Quintero...
Yes.
Weaver...
Aye.
Mayor Friedman...
Yes. Okay, let's go to 5B.
5B is Director of Public Works regarding vacation of the remainder of Orange Street bounded on the south by Colorado Street and on the north by Crusoe Avenue, private street within the Americana at Brand for the Americana at Brand Expansion Project, vacation case number 167V. At B1 is motion authorizing City Clerk to set a public hearing for the subject, "Street Vacation."
Are we going to Mr. Zern?
Or is there a question?
Was there a question or did you want a staff report?
I can give you a brief overview.
Yeah, it's just, it's just setting a public hearing at this...
This is just setting the public hearing to consider the vacation.
It's not the actual vacation itself.
That'll be at the public hearing.
All right. I'm well aware that this is just a vacation of this particular road, but I just want to be on the record very clear early into the engagement, so to speak, that there needs to be an entrance to that section of the Americana at Brand. And it needs to be visible from Colorado, well-defined, because this is the lead into a principal corner in the city of Glendale, that is Colorado and Brand. And so having high walls without glass from the Nordstrom's department store, having a narrow alleyway that doesn't address the remainder of Colorado, the businesses on the south end, hotels, café, et cetera, absolutely doesn't work in terms of design or what's good for the overall environment in that section of Colorado. So even though it's just a vacation of this street, I just want to make sure that whoever's responsible understands that unless what I've discussed is incorporated into the overall design, I'll be voting against it. I don't want to see a narrow alley without any opening to Colorado and sort of an afterthought for the remainder of the street.
Mr. Howard?
My suggestion is that we hold all commitments to vote on this until we have the actual hearing and we hear the evidence.
Okay.
I think that's what I was hearing.
Yeah. I'll move 5B.
As amended to reflect that it's a street vacation, hearing not in alley.
Well, second, and I'll just make comments saying that I will be looking very closely at the suggestions that Mr. Quintero's made into this item when it is coming. When is the date for the public hearing? When is it being set?
Well, and I'll also ask, this particular hearing sounds to me like it doesn't involve a design review portion. Is that correct? This is just...
Correct.
So that would be a separate issue in terms, so we would first vote on this and then later we would have the chance to vote on the design. It's not going to be the same hearing.
Right.
Is there a date being set or just...
Has not been set. Mr. Manukian, the date hasn't been set yet.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, just to my knowledge, it's not just a little narrow passageway, it's wide with lights and whatever. So I think what they're coming up with will satisfy all of us. Plus, the recording studio facade is going to be on the Colorado side, part of the historical designation agreement.
Yeah, I think, I think we should not get into comments on something that's not in agenda...
No, I'm just addressing what Mr. Quintero said and what I know.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Manukian...
Yes.
Najarian, Quintero...
Yes.
Weaver...
Aye.
Mayor Friedman...
Yes. Next item, please.
5C is General Manager of GWP regarding conducting a pilot scale study of biological treatment to remove nitrates in GWP groundwater. C1 is motion authorizing amendment to contract with Water Quality and Treatment Solution, Inc., WQTS, in an amount not to exceed $205,290 to conduct a pilot scale study.
Mr. Steiger?
Mayor Friedman, members of the Glendale City Council, I'm going to ask our Assistant General Manager of Water Services, Peter Cavounis, to give you a quick overview of
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item is a request to, to spend the amount indicated on a firm that's called Water Quality and Treatment Solutions, WQTS. The firm would conduct a pilot program to demonstrate the viability of biological removal of nitrate from groundwater. The demonstration is necessary to satisfy the Department of Public Health and give us the ability to use the water that we anticipate we'll be able to get from the Rockhaven well. That water, we know, has nitrate in it that will need to be treated. And again, the pilot is necessary to prove that the process will work.
Manukian?
Thank you, and my concern is the cost-benefit analysis of this, of this study. We are authorizing additional $205,290. How much have we spent so far on, on this study?
This is the first amount that would be spent on the water quality portion of the study. We expect the total project...
But this is a contract amendment. Why are we amending it? Why isn't it, if it was a new contract, then it would be a new amount. But if it's amended, that means we spent something on it? Now, an additional $205,000 is being requested. Am I correct?
You are correct. No money has been spent on this study so far. WQTS has done other work for us related to water quality.
Okay.
We're proposing... We're proposing to use the same firm, but to do different work than has been done before. So with respect to this project, this is the first and only amount that we expect to spend. In terms of benefit to the city...
Then it wouldn't be a contract amendment, it would be a new contract, wouldn't it?
But we have an existing contract in place for the work that they have done prior on other scope related to water quality.
Okay. But now, I mean, we use contractors all the time, so they finish one project, when they start another one, they sign a new contract, right?
Yes, it so happens in this particular case, the prior contract has not expired.
Okay.
But we have no money in the scope of this...
How much was the prior contract? How much work did they do for us?
I couldn't tell you exactly. They've done various small projects for us. I couldn't tell you right now.
How much will it cost us to provide this water to the community? Because... Or is that amount known? Again, I'm looking at the cost benefit analysis of cleaning nitrates from the water, from the aquifer, from the water that comes out from the well and providing it to the community. How much is that going to cost?
It's difficult to tell exactly how much it will cost. I can tell you that the indications that we have from the Rockhaven well are that it'll be able to save the residents of Glendale somewhere in the order of half a million dollars a year, once the well goes into production. We expect that the drilling equipment of the well, along with any treatment, will probably cost between one and a half to $2 million. So we expect to get our money back in about four years' time from this well, and the well would have a life of about 50 years.
Fifty?
Yes.
Okay. In your summary, paragraph three on your summary, it says that if both treatments are accepted... It says that all these treatments are accepted by the water board, the water... By the water board, and if they're both accepted, why do we need a pilot study to demonstrate that it should be accepted again? And it's... Why do we need a pilot study if it's accepted by them?
The traditional...
California Department of Public Health.
The traditional treatment for nitrate generates a waste stream, a salty waste stream that's brine, and that needs to be disposed, and that comes at a great expense. This particular treatment holds the promise that there would be brine stream... There would be no brine stream, there would be a stream that would be disposed of in the sewer. So it would cut down on the future operating cost of the treatment process. We think it's well worth exploring to demonstrate this process. The challenge is that since this process hasn't been adopted by the Department of Public Health, for them to adopt it, they need this pilot project to prove it out.
So we're doing a pilot study on the waste generated from the cleaning of the nitrates?
It's actually the treatment of the nitrates itself which includes a waste stream.
The recommended treatment is biological, where you have bacterias.
Right.
You're going to introduce bacterias into the water supply. Is that going to generate... By introducing bacteria, you're not generating specific wastewater? So by introducing the bacteria, it's going to generate the additional wastewater, or brine, as you call it?
In... If you look at the traditional nitrate removal process, it's an ion exchange process which then introduces salt that has to be disposed of in a waste stream. This particular process, the water flows through a bed that has bacteria in it. The bacteria consume the nitrogen.
So you don't dump it in there like you do in the pools? Now you dump chlorine in the pools? That's not what you're doing?
No.
Okay.
And so the waste from this process is bacteria that would then be disposed of in the sewer.
Okay, so it's a separate filtering system that you're talking about?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, I just wanted to understand it, and... Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And I'll move the item, if there are no other additional questions.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Jarian, Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Next item, please.
5D is Director of Public Works regarding fiscal year 2010-2011 Slurry Seal Program, Spec. 3440. D1 is Resolution Adopting Spec and Directing City Clerk to Advertise For Fids.
I know what the slurry seal program is. I've done slurry seal myself in past life. The question is, isn't the fiscal year 2010-2011 over with, and why are we adopting a resolution for the current fiscal year? Shouldn't it be for the next fiscal year?
Mr. Mayor...
I mean, if we were going to slurry seal, we should have adopted this at the beginning, which is July 2010, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Menucha, this is the scheduled program for this fiscal year. We're a little bit late on it because we...
Oh, wait.
Well, normally, we'd try to probably do this in March, but we expected heavier rains this year, so we decided to let it go a little bit further and get into the warmer season.
I just have an issue with contracts being approved at the end of a fiscal year for a current fiscal year. That's the main issue, actually. So if it was scheduled in March, shouldn't it have been approved beforehand? Or when you schedule it in March, you approve it in March?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Menucha, we have it approved in the budget each year as the program for that year. Now sometime between July and June, our goal is to get that project out. So this is our...
You adopt the resolution every year? For... You adopt the resolution every year, even though it's in the budget?
Yes, yeah, oh yeah. We come back with specifications that it's a general approval in the budget, and we come back with the specifics sometime during that fiscal year. And we're at the tail end of it, but this is the program we had budgeted for this year.
Okay.
If I can add, letting the contract by the end of fiscal year will allow finance to then encumber the money, even though the contract may actually be executed over the line into the next fiscal year. Without the contract, it would be a project carryover, and we're really not doing those anymore. So it's not uncommon for Public Works work to flow toward the end of the year, and actually maybe sometimes have work done in the subsequent fiscal year, as long as the money's been encumbered.
What is the harm in approving it for the next fiscal year?
I'm sorry.
What is the harm in approving this contract in July?
It wouldn't. The money's here now, it will be there in July as well. And this, as Mr. Starbert said, with CIP projects, capital improvement projects, they are not treated the same, the contract, as general contracts we have. These will carry over and bridge fiscal years. Mr. Menucha, we will sometimes have projects that are more than 12 months, so it won't finish until a subsequent fiscal year. And again, on slurry seal, it's always about timing on the weather, so this is towards the end of the year. It's, to be honest with you, the contract probably wouldn't be executed until the new fiscal year. It's a month to bid it and...
How long does this slurry seal last?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Menucha, in a residential setting, we can probably get 15, sometimes 20 years out of slurry.
Really?
Slurry is... And it's something that we've spent a lot more money on the last several years than what I call "saving streets," streets that are still in good enough condition that we get to slurry the chip seal or the other sealing techniques on it as quickly as possible, seal the cracks. And that helps us preserve that street for a much longer time, so that we don't have to do the much more costly repairs which are resurfacing or reconstruction, which cost literally millions of dollars as compared to this.
Last year, we spent approximately $2.3 million on this program. Have we... And this one, this program is only allocating 405 to 465. Is that sufficient? Should we be spending more?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Menucha, this will be one program. We'll probably come back with a second program in the summer in a different maintenance district. This is Maintenance District 12 at the northern part of the city. We wanted to finish that first. We did the... It took us a little longer. We did it north of Foothill, but when we ran into the fire and the subsequent rains up at the Duke Mason Park area, we had to delay that. So this allows us to finish everything south of Foothill and then move to the next maintenance district. So likely, you will see another slurry seal project this summer.
The account that it's being allocated to is the gutter construction program. Why is it being allocated to the gutter in construction? Shouldn't it be slurry seal program funding? It's account number 40251501. Is it proper to allocate it to the gutter?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Menucha, with our CIP, we, in the past, had segregated it between resurfacing, reconstruction, and gutter program. All of them, it's a single amount of money that we use...
Is it all in the same fund?
Yeah. In this 402 fund, it's gas tax monies, which is only eligible for the repair of roads.
So it's restricted?
So we will sometimes... We may have budgeted a certain amount for resurfacing, but we may feel that it's better to do more slurry seal in one year, so we'll shift the money there. That's why we come back to you for specific approval.
Okay, thank you. I'll move the item.
Second. May roll call?
Councilmembers Menucha?
Yes.
Jarian, Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver? Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Next item, please.
At 5B is General Manager of GWP regarding proposals received to conduct feasibility studies, recommend cost-effective and reliable reconstruction options for the Grandview Substation site, and prepare design-built specifications. 5B1 is a motion awarding contract with Pike Energy Solutions, Inc., and a not-to-exceed amount of $126,746, including contingency and rejecting all other proposals.
If you can give us a brief summary as to what we're replacing and what this contract feasibility study will do for...
Okay, what we are proposing to replace is the Grandview Substation. Currently, the Grandview Substation has a capacity of about 22 megawatts. It serves about 430 of our larger industrial and commercial customers, along with about 1,100 residential customers in the western part of Glendale, off of San Fernando Road. We are expecting a fairly substantial expansion from one of our customers, one of our larger customers in that area, along with some other customers, which over time will add about... Could add about 30 megawatts to that substation. Along with that, that substation is aging and is at a lower voltage level than the levels that we're currently trying to upgrade all of our substations and distribution feeders to. And what that is, is we are elevating the voltage from 4 KV, 4,000 volts, to 12 KV throughout the city for reliability purposes on the distribution side. On the transmission side, or the high voltage end, we are increasing voltage from 34,000 to 69,000. This particular substation will ultimately be at 69 KV and will have the all 14 feeders built at 12 KV. And that's what this is meant to do. It's something needed for reliability and also because of the expansion of the area.
Has... Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, has the council approved the replacement of the building before you do the feasibility study?
It's... In concept, it has, yes. Of course, we'll have to come back with firm contracts.
What do you mean in council?
The idea of rebuilding the Grandview Substation has been...
Has rebuilding the Grandview Station come to the council, and the council voted on it?
It has, in our budget, yes.
Okay. Have we voted on it?
My question has to do with the idea of having, with all the engineers we have at GWP and Public Works, the idea that we have to do a professional services agreement for over $110,000 to conduct feasibility studies, recommend cost-effective, reliable construction options. Now, the need for the Grandview Station, I assume, is appropriate. It sounds like it is, in reading the background report. But why is it that we have to pay a firm to do this? I mean, I've been talking about this for a long time, so try to persuade me again that we need to pay... That we don't have the engineers that can sort of figure it out themselves.
Okay, the technology involved in this substation, in fact, all of our new substations, as with the Glorieta Substation that we just finished building, now incorporates a level of technology that, in general, we do not have the capability for design purposes here in Glendale. And that's both for the breakers and for the smart grid technology that we're now building into our substations. Because over time, and this is a long time, our entire system will be automated. We are building a distribution automation system that starts at the substation. So whenever we build or rebuild a new substation, we build it with higher technology. So one reason is because we don't have that level of technological expertise at the moment. Secondly, we don't rebuild substations on a regular basis, so we don't staff up for that level of work within our own engineering group. So we really have two reasons that we go out to hire outside consulting help for these things.
And with so many out-of-work engineers, wouldn't we be better off just hiring someone for a year and bringing them in-house and having them do the work?
Well, we prefer not to hire and then fire.
Oh, that's what I said, a one-year contract, or... I mean, I don't know, we're continually doing this, and I'm just astounded that we have to spend the kind of money that we spend for these firms to... I don't know. Seems like we could come up with a better plan. That's my only question.
Yeah, in your report, you say that the increase in the load cannot be accommodated at the Grandview Station, but that area is being serviced by Grandview along with Western, not just Grandview.
That's correct.
Doesn't... Can't both of them handle it? Do you have to rebuild the building?
No, they back each other up. And that's... Our system works on contingency. So every single substation backs each other up in case one is out, and that does happen occasionally, so...
Shouldn't you rebuild both of them?
No, not necessarily. We will, at some point in time, assess the need to do that, but we have a plan to, over many, many, many years, upgrade the voltage to all of our substations. That's true, but we wouldn't do it at the same time.
It would seem kind of logical to me, if you're going to build one and you have another one that backs it up, it would be logical to rebuild both of them, not just one of them.
It's quite expensive to do that, so that's why we...
How much would it cost to rebuild one?
About $12 million.
$12 million? Do we have that kind of money? Where?
In their capital program in GWP. But as he notes, to do many of them, it would stretch the capital improvement budget and resources.
Other questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Go 5B.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Councilmembers Menucha?
No.
Jarian, Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Next item, please.
5G is General Manager of GWP regarding request for proposals, RFP, to load, transport, salvage, recycle, and/or dispose of obsolete electrical equipment. At G1's Resolution approving issuance of an RFP and authorizing General Manager to advertise for proposals.
Okay. Mr. Steiger? Well, I'll ask Mr. Menucha, did you have any...
Yeah, I do know, I do understand that this is recycling the electrical equipment. My question is, what kind of controls do we have to make sure that recycling is actually going to the recycler?
Yeah, I'm going to...
And what kind of controls are we going to have for that?
I'm going to ask our Assistant General Manager of Electric Services, Ramona Boyk, to address that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. All this equipment that are considered with oil, they have to go through with a manifest. So basically, they go from cradle to grave, that they have to have the manifest and they track, so that they don't discard these items improperly.
And also, it says, under fiscal impact, you have that compensation will be pursued to the rate table. However, the rate table has no dollar amounts or rates attached to it.
Yeah, that will be the bid that they will be submitting. Historically, in the past, we have been paying people to pick up and dispose of these items for us. What we found is there are some salvagers that would actually salvage the core, the iron, the metal parts of this, with the cost of metal being as high as they are now. We can actually, instead of paying them to dispose of it, we will actually get paid to get it disposed.
Right, but you have attached a rate table that has no dollar amounts.
That's the bid form that they have to fill out, and that will be our basis.
Oh, that's the bid form they have to fill out.
That's correct.
So there is no preset amounts for these rates?
No, we do not. What we're looking for is somebody that would give us the best value for the equipment that we're discarding.
You have to excuse me, you are, there's an echo over there, so sometimes I don't hear you very well. And do we know how much it will generate in terms of dollar amounts for us?
We know how much we would save. In the last year, we disposed of about half the amount, and we spent about $200,000 with no payback. So we know we're saving at least that much. We don't know how much we'll get back for what we're doing. That's why we're doing the bid process.
Okay, how much was it last year again?
We spent about $200,000 just to get somebody to haul away and dispose of our equipment that we've accumulated.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
If there are no other questions, I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Council members Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian, Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes, next item, please.
At 5H is General Manager of GWP regarding professional services relative to the Water System Capital Improvement Program, CIP, for fiscal year 2010, 2011. At H1 is motion approving changes, orders, and contract extensions for Kennedy Jenks Consultants, Inc., $246,225 for the Glorieta wells and Rockhaven well to June 30, 2013, Lee and Rowe, Inc., $189,740 for the Glorieta wells to June 30, 2012, and Cannon, Inc., $11,200 for the Glorieta Park pump station to June 30, 2012.
Do you have a specific question, Mr. Manukian?
Yeah, why are we approving all these contract extensions in all-in-one motion? What is, what is the reason for all of this at the end of our fiscal year?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Peter Cavones to come back up and give you an overview of these contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Steiger, Madam Mayor, members of the council. When we plan our capital improvement program for each year that's coming, our focus is to deliver capital projects to you at the lowest cost possible. We have a small engineering staff that is primarily geared to deliver minor capital projects and some of our larger capital projects. Part of our, our ability to deliver capital projects at the lowest cost, possible cost, includes using some consultants for these services. These are services that either augment the staff that we have in-house or bring expertise that we don't have and really don't want to have long-term in-house. That's why we hire consultants in the first place. The way we've addressed this in the past in the Water Department is we've issued on-call services contracts with four firms. About three and a half years ago, we issued a request for qualifications. We had 11 firms respond, and from those, through a selective process, we selected four of them and entered into contracts. Each year, we come to City Council and project how much money we're going to spend for these contracts, so we get authorization to spend up to that amount of money on each year. And then the year that follows, we come back again. We are at the end of this three-year arrangement, and starting next fiscal year, we'll come back to you with a request for, for your approval to issue a new request for qualifications and get a whole new set of firms that would assist us with our capital projects. In this particular case, we have three projects that are very critical to us, and that's why they're still moving forward in our capital program. And for these projects, do not, the end of these projects does not coincide with the end of the fiscal year. These projects will continue over the next two years. So the amount of money that you see here and the services that are needed are for the next two and a half years, and is why we're asking for an augmentation at this point in time.
I just received a card on this, Herbert Milano. I'll go to Mr. Quintero first.
I have a question. How many engineers does GWP have?
We have five.
Five?
This is, excuse me, to be clear, for the water section.
And for electric?
I don't know.
Mr. Steiger, how many engineers in the electric?
How many?
We're doing hand signals. Ramona, why don't you come up and answer the question?
Including the power plant and electric, we have about 18 engineers at various different levels.
And to your comment, Mr. Cavones, you know, the staff is small. I mean, no one at this department has ever heard of hiring an engineer for a year, or six months, or 18 months, on a contract, because every other organization that I'm familiar with does it. And it just appears to me that that would be much cheaper than hiring companies that have to provide for profit, overhead, and everything else. So that's why I asked the question.
I agree, Mr. Quintero. And hiring someone short-term is the right way to go, and we believe these contracts offer that to us. Somewhere along the way, any person is employed by someone, and in this particular case, the vehicle is the contractor or the consultant that we're using. We're using them for a very short term, and when we're done, when a project's done, they're gone and they're no longer on the payroll, no longer costing us benefits.
To Weaver.
As an engineer, I can tell you that the engineering profession in this country of ours is sadly lacking in students coming out with degrees in engineering. There's a shortage of engineers qualified nationwide to handle this infrastructure of the country that we're going to have to rebuild. And any engineer of their soul has a job and isn't going to quit to work for one year and then go out and try to find another job. They get set in their routine and their specialty, and that's where they stay for long periods of time. I understand exactly what Mr. Cavones is saying.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, the statistics don't show that. In fact, there's lots of unemployment in the engineering profession like there is across the board, architects and everybody else, but...
No, I don't agree with you, but let's let it go at that.
Okay, let me go to the public, Herbert Milano.
Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I'm a very strong supporter of any capital improvements that come in with regard to the Department of Water and Power. And I'm particularly concerned at so many projects that have been lagging due to insufficient funds in previous years. In 2007, there was a study made by a consulting group that defined close to, or over, $200 million of capital improvements needed for the water utility. What I would, what I would like to see, and I think that the public may benefit, is by having, on a periodic basis, when these proposals come before you, to have a graph of the state of the current capital assets that the water utility has, so that we get a refresher on how far back we are with regard to the state of those assets. And I'm referring to not just the water utility, but the electrical utility as well. This way, they can address this particular proposals in light of what deficiencies they are addressing. Because it is my understanding from that report, and I cannot remember the name of the consulting group that did this work, but there's a very significant backlog of capital improvements that the utility needs, and I think that a refresher to figure out how we are addressing those would be good for the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Weaver?
Well, we have five- and 10-year programs that show our backlogs. They're prioritized according to which ones are more critical and which are within reasonable funding levels of monies that we have. In my 37-year career, we had hundreds and hundreds of multi-year contracts, with the first funding coming in the first year, maybe a small amount, going on to a second and third year in some cases. That's the way the engineers put these programs together, and that's done nationwide.
Let me just make a comment. I'm not, the reason why I'm bringing all this up, because I do remember in my time, the eight years I served on the council, on a number of occasions, executives came up to the council and said, oh, we had this, we had this study we had to do, but we forgot about it. Therefore, it's the fiscal year end, so we're gonna, I'm not saying it's you, just so it's clear. It's the fiscal year end, we haven't spent this money, so we're going to do the study now, and because we haven't done it. To me, that indicates that the study was not needed to begin with, if they forgot about it. So whenever I see at the end of fiscal year, a number of studies that are being done, I'm always hesitant in approving it, and I want to ask the questions as to why these studies are being done and whether they are absolutely necessary for the projects. So I appreciate your report. Thank you, and I'll move the item if there are no other comments.
I'll second with one additional comment. Sometimes, due to favorable bids, there are sufficient net funds left below the budgetary amount that we can get up with a small program, whether it be slurry seal or something else, if we have a contractor working in the area and we can do and add on to it. Makes sense, so we don't have money sitting on the shelf not being utilized. My second.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Council members Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian, Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes, next item, please.
Next item would be oral communications. This portion is for a three-minute announcement.
Okay, and we have, to begin with, a special announcement and a special group of people. I'm going to ask Chang Li to come up and introduce our guests.
I would like to thank the council for being patient, and everyone who's been patient with me. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and the city staff. As part of the ongoing assisted city program, we have 21 students who are ninth graders from our assisted city, Kowloon. And I know Mayor and Councilmember Frank Quintero, you've been back, visited Kowloon. And these kids are staying, home-staying in Glendale right now for the next three days, and they're actually attending Wilson Middle School. And what Wilson Middle School has done, and Principal Lucas has done a really wonderful job of pairing these students with other students, and actually going through the motion in school, and they're really, really enjoying the experience in Wilson Middle School and the stay in Glendale. What they've done is that they prepared a little performance, it's called Fan Dance, and they're telling me that the, I guess, area here is a little bit narrow, and so I don't know if we can move the front chairs a little bit back or podium sideways?
We can.
Okay.
Yeah, as soon as we get the city attorney off to his chair.
The chairs are hooked together, so we need a... This is the variety portion of tonight's council meeting. We're doing this for the ratings. I think it's sweeps week for public television. Do we have music? Now, I hope GTV6 is going to be able to get a wide enough shot to show this for the folks in home. There they go. We'll can let them start to adjust their...
Actually, we have Director of International Relations, Mr. Park Kwangmyung is here, and also Mr. Chan Younghee is the teacher, the leader of this group, and they'll be coming up to present the dance with eight students. Only in Glendale you'll see this.
That was really beautiful. I've never seen anything quite like that. The students are leaving the room, but before you go, thank you.
No, they have to change.
Oh, they have to change, okay. Because we have some gifts for them, and I'd love for them to come and introduce themselves. Chang, should we start with the first group?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm going to ask my colleagues to, if you'd like to, to join me. We have a lot of gifts to give out to a lot of kids. a lot of gifts to give out to a lot of kids.
Yeah, we'll start with them, and maybe they can come out and introduce themselves.
Yeah. 학생들 여기 나와세요. 이름들이 얘기하고 그 다음에 여기서 받아가세요. 다 나와요.
James.
James.
Ah. Che.
Bo-seok Che.
Jae-gyeong Bok.
Jung-hyuk Kim.
O-muk Park.
Ahng-shin Ha.
Josh Lee.
Harry Shin.
David Yu.
Kang-gon Kim.
Seo-nu Kim.
Seong-hun De.
Yoo-ann Che.
Won-ju Zhang.
Ho-jeong Ri.
Hello, my name is Ihae Young-ei-jang. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
My name is Kwangmyung Park.
They brought something from Co-song as well, Mayor.
Hey. Thank you all for coming.
Jamie, where is one?
I'm sure they're having a wonderful experience, and the families that they're staying with, I'm sure, are also having a really great cultural exchange. My next speaker is Jacqueline White.
I feel like I should have brought some props with me. I don't know if I can compete with that. Thank you, Mayor Friedman, and the city council members tonight for allowing me to speak. My name is Jacqueline White. I'm Executive Director of Family Promise of the San Fernando Valley. Family Promise is a program that helps homeless children and their families with temporary housing, food, and intense case management services, so that families can regain and sustain financial independence. Family Promise is able to provide such exemplary services on a very small budget, because we partner with congregations in Glendale, Burbank, and Eagle Rock. I'm here today to promote a very exciting event coming up on June 5th. Family Promise is hosting the first annual Empty Bowls fundraiser. Since opening in July 2010, Family Promise has been able to help 14 families in their quest for financial independence. Family Promise's mission is to bring communities together to help homeless families achieve lasting sustainability, and the Empty Bowls fundraiser is a perfect example of our mission. By partnering with local independent artists, art associations, businesses, restaurants, and service clubs, Family Promise is giving the opportunity for anyone to help end homelessness. Upon entering this event, guests are invited to select a handcrafted ceramic bowl, which will then be filled with a simple meal of soup, bread, and dessert. This one-of-a-kind art piece is now a lasting symbol of the hunger and uncertainty families face daily. From the bowls to the food to the event space, all has been graciously donated to Family Promise, so that all money that we raised will help end family homelessness. We're hoping to help 16 to 20 families this year regain their financial independence. Now, please enjoy our short video about our Empty Bowls fundraiser, which will detail how to get tickets to this exciting event.
Family Promise of the East San Fernando Valley presents the first annual Empty Bowl event to raise awareness and funds for homeless families in our community. Join us Sunday, June 5th at the St. Finnbar Community Center, 2110 West Olive Avenue in Burbank, anytime between 12:30 and 3:30 p.m. Tickets are $25 and are on sale now through a Family Promise representative, or by calling Enjoy an afternoon of food, fun, and community fellowship. Your ticket includes a bowl of soup, bread, and drinks donated by local restaurants, and a beautiful handcrafted ceramic bowl made by local artisans, as a reminder of the hunger and uncertainty homeless families face every day. The 2011 Family Promise Empty Bowl: Ending Homelessness, One Family at a Time.
I hope to see all of you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I can just put a plug in for this wonderful group. Marsha Ramos, who's a former mayor of Burbank and who was in the video, recruited me to be on Family Promise's advisory board. And so I've been able to see through the email chains and meeting with the group and meeting with one of our congregations here in Glendale, the really wonderful groups, wonderful work that they do here. And it's at a really grassroots level, having local families through their churches and congregations, house families while they get back on their feet, is a really, it's a wonderful, wonderful goal. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you so much, Mayor Friedman, city council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is adoption of, I'm sorry, there are no ordinance for adoption action items, and A-DA is the General Manager of GWP regarding amendments to the Water Conservation Ordinance. A-DA 1 is resolution lifting Phase 2 of the Water Conservation Ordinance restrictions, Chapter 13.36.070B of the Glendale Municipal Code, and implementing Phase 1 of the Water Conservation Ordinance, Chapter 13.36070A of the Glendale Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mr. Steiger.
Mayor Friedman, members of the Glendale City Council. As you may recall, in August of 2009, we came before you to request your approval to institute Phase 2 of our Water Conservation Ordinance here in Glendale, which essentially implemented mandatory water restrictions. And since that time, we have imposed mandatory water restrictions within all customer sectors here in Glendale. And it's actually been quite successful, as we've again brought before you in the past. Those efforts have saved close to 19% on water, which is very, very admirable, and has accomplished more than we needed, but it really sets the pace for where we need to go. Tonight, I'm going to turn it over now to our Assistant General Manager of Water Services, Peter Cavounas, to explain why we are recommending that we lift these mandatory water restrictions. Mr. Cavounas?
Thank you, Mr. Steiger. Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. This item, as Mr. Steiger mentioned, came about when, in 2008, there were a couple of court decisions that were very adverse to the interest in Southern California, the water supply interest in Southern California. And those gave us the first hint that things were going to have to change, that things were not going to be the same in the future as they had been in the past. In addition to that, we started seeing a drought on all the sources that Southern California draws from to meet its water needs. And as Mr. Steiger said, we had a severe shortage, and the Metropolitan Water District, our wholesale supplier of water, from whom we purchased 65% of our water in the city, implemented a shortage allocation program that included penalties for member agencies that exceeded their allocation. That program had stayed in effect and was recently eliminated. In response to that, we modified the Glendale Municipal Code. Up until that time, up until 2009, the Municipal Code called for conservation in terms of percentage that we would ask residents to cut back, and we changed it to be more direct and more effective in mandating how many days of the week people could water. We targeted the outdoor watering as the primary use in Glendale that could be curtailed. And as Mr. Steiger said, we were very successful. At that time, your council adopted Phase 2, which restricted watering to three days a week that prescribed Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday only. Since that time, the severity of the drought has been considerably reduced. Actually, this year, the state water project is committed to delivering 80% of the Metropolitan Water District's needs, and that's more water than MWD can handle. MWD is busy putting water into storage, has filled all the storages, and actually, to accommodate more water, is now selling water at a discount to agencies that can put it underground. So things have changed very rapidly. It's been a long, wet winter, and it's resulted in that, in the condition, the good condition that we have now. Since the severity has been eliminated, MWD took an action to eliminate the shortage allocation to its member agencies, so we're no longer required to take a certain amount or face penalties. According to the Municipal Code, we are to consider and make recommendations to you that minimize the hardship to the city and the general public. Now, with that in mind, the most logical thing to do would be to simply eliminate conservation altogether. The reality is that the legal restrictions to our water supply in Southern California still remain, and so we believe that the appropriate phase for water conservation in Glendale would be Phase 1, which is essentially all the no-water-waste provisions of the Municipal Code, highlighted by an ordinance by your council that adopts that and makes that a reality. Coupled with that, we plan to change, if your council adopts the recommendation, we plan to change the effort that we've made in the last two years of promoting mandatory conservation, only irrigating on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. We plan to change that into a campaign of use water wisely, because we do think that that's a message that needs to continue with the community. The community has embraced water conservation. We think people in Glendale have learned that they don't need to water their lawn more than three days a week for the lawn to remain vibrant and healthy. And we think that will continue with a gentle reminder of using water wisely. So the recommendation in front of you is to eliminate Phase 2, conservation Phase 2, and go into Phase 1, which accentuates the no-water-waste policies of the Municipal Code.
Mr. Cantaro.
Well, quite frankly, I was a little surprised when the MWD reacted so quickly, and although it's been a wonderful year, and as you describe, all of the reservoirs are full, and I assume the aquifers are also being filled, but doesn't it seem a bit premature?
You know, I participated in member agency managers' meetings in Metropolitan Water District, and those, that was my exact question. And Metropolitan Water District assured us that they would not be going back to a shortage allocation in the next two years at least, based on the supplies that they have received.
Don't you think we should get a consultant to make sure we're...
I really don't. I can tell you.
Low blow, low blow.
Even though we have water for the next two years, we think, certainly there'll be a point where we're going to have water shortages again. So the worry is whether people will forget, or whether we'll use up too much of the water that's in storage. And what I wonder is whether there are some of the parts of the ordinance that we should preserve while putting the rest, as you said, to a voluntary. You know, some of the uses of water that are maybe more egregious or more wasteful than others. For instance, we had a suggestion from a resident, an email I just got today, that said, why don't we, instead of just, you know, getting rid of the watering days, why don't we extend them and make it four days instead of three? So I'm wondering what you think about going through sort of a menu and maybe having options of retaining some of the mandatory conservation, and, or whether you think we should just make everything voluntary?
You know, I think there's a lot to be said about the conservation ethic that's been adopted, not just by Glendale, but all of Southern California. And I think there is a good point to be made in continuing the effort. Again, our effort is to reach out to the community and say, you've done very well. You've learned the three days a week work, so please continue the three days a week. So our messaging will be to continue three days a week. The difficult part is in whether we tell people which days a week, or whether we leave it up to them which to do. My suggestion to you would be to leave it alone. Of course, we can always rewrite the Municipal Code, because that's what we would have to do. We can always rewrite that if that's what the council wants to do. The way it's set up today is we go back to voluntary, and our messaging is what guides them to, in addition to the no-water-waste provisions, to remember that three days a week is enough.
So that would be the message in the advertising and the other outreach?
Yes, very strongly so. And actually, as we have done before, we coordinate with Burbank and Pasadena, so we have a consistent message throughout. We have a scheduled meeting with them, actually, tomorrow. Pasadena passed an ordinance that went simply back to voluntary conservation, same as we're recommending to you. Burbank has not acted on that yet. Staff's recommendation to their commission was to do the same thing. So we're not out of line with what the community is going to do. Many other communities in Southern California have rushed to get out of mandatory conservation from a standard-of-living imposition on the customers' point of view.
Well, let me say how impressed I have been that Glendale residents have decided, in a sense, it was voluntarily. I mean, I don't think we were out enforcing particularly, but yet it showed without question that everyone understood how severe the drought was. I'm a bit torn as to just letting it go, but...
Well, certainly, we need to be sure the public understands that even if we lift this today and make it voluntary, that it's any, at some point in the future, we'll probably be back to mandatory conservation, depending on what the weather holds over the next few years, and we certainly can't predict that far out. So I do think it was a great lesson for all of us to be able to see that we can live with the mandatory conservation. Surprisingly, I can't remember receiving one email or one contact from a community member saying that this had put a huge burden on them, that it was a hardship. I got more emails about people complaining about neighbors violating the ordinance than about any hardship to themselves. But of course, it was a very wet winter, and it could be that the next time that we're in mandatory conservation, we don't get so lucky, and we really are in an extended drought again, and then it might be a little more difficult. But hopefully, if people start practicing now and really taking conservation to heart, that won't be so painful when that time comes. Mr. Weaver.
I don't hold this, don't hold me to this, but when I studied the historical precipitation rates over the last century in Southern California, there were cycles of seven years of drought, seven years of rain. I hope I'm not cursing it. We're into one or more years now.
All right, just messed it all up.
I know, that's what I figured, drought next year. But maybe there's a way to react quicker. If you have a drought here, start to put the brakes on quicker. I don't know if MWD's thinking that way, but rather than go through three or four years of drought and says, hmm, maybe we ought to put it on, you get one year of drought, and I says, oh, wait, let's fill the jar back up again. That'd be my suggestion, but I will find out next winter if it's going to rain again.
Okay. Any more discussion? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move A-1.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize to the public. I do have a speaker, Mike Mohill. Thank you for reminding me.
That's what he's there for.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman and council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I remember when this, the drought thing came about, and you asked us all to conserve about 10%, and then we ended up conserving 18%? And then you raised our water rate 3.8%? We have high unemployment in this city. We have foreclosures high. Landlords are given two months of free rent. Housing values have dropped 25%. And as you know from the previous speakers, we have homeless in this society today. Why don't we reduce the rate by 3.8%? That should be our reward for being good citizens of Glendale. We are penalized before. Let's be compassionate. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
We had it.
Mr. Howard.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just for the record, I received an email from Mr. Cornell, who requested that a, I believe it was a letter that each one of you, I assume, received from him, that sets forth his views on modifying the, going from Phase 2 to Phase 1, and some modifications that he had. He'd like this to be part of the record.
Yes, please.
There's no objection, it'll be part of the record.
Okay, thank you. Motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Darian?
Cantaro? Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Next item, please.
AP City Attorney, regarding Amendment Section 2.62.040 of the Glendale Municipal Code relating qualifications of commissioners serving on the Arts and Culture Commission. E-1 is ordinance for introduction.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is the follow-up item from the May 10th agenda regarding the qualifications for the Arts and Culture Commission. This is the ordinance that the council directed us to bring back, changing...
This is the ordinance that the council directed us to bring back, changing the minimum qualifications that one member be associated with GUSD and one member be affiliated with a institution of higher education, and making those qualifications desired but not mandatory. So that's the extent of the ordinance. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? I do have a card, Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman and council members. My name is Mike Mohill. This arts commission and the structuring of it leaves me question, ask several questions. To be qualified, you make, you make these rules, but how about the point of being desired to be on this commission and have great passion? Why want, why must someone have an arts background to be on this commission? You know, I just came back yesterday, Sunday, from the Lauren L. Zachary Society for the Performing Arts, presenting their grand finale concert. They were giving awards of $12,000 in total value. The person who started this thing back in 1972 was a medical doctor, not an artist. He had passion concern for the arts. That should be the concern, not because you are a piano player or you're in theater arts. It's your passion. I remember here a couple of years ago, there's a man by the name of Al Hoffman wanted to be on this commission, and one, one councilman said, no, you don't qualify because you're not an artist, you're an engineer background. Please, if someone has compassion and interest in a, in a commission, unless he's a felon and has a bad record, why wouldn't you not consider him? You pass judgment every day on, on items that you don't have a background on, that you have passion and interest, and that's why you decided to become council members. Let's be open-minded. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, we don't have any criteria that arts and culture commissioners have to be artists, do we?
Not specifically artists, but it does say that, that they should either be an arts administrator, or an artist of some type, or a business leader that has demonstrated stewardship in the arts. So it's not necessarily have to be someone whose engagement will be believed in the traditional arts, like a piano player, but they do have to have some art background and then, or that stewardship.
Or working with a nonprofit, or any nonprofit in the arts.
It's a little, it's a little more specific than that. The language, for example, is an artist, designer, arts administrator in the fields of the performing, visual, folk, or literary arts, or architecture, or a business community leader. It's an acknowledged record of stewardship.
What about a person who loves art, they can't be on the commission?
You're actually, what you're getting to is a policy decision the council can make, as Mr. Mohill noted, whether one uses the phrase "passion," or otherwise, you can modify the criteria. At, at this point, the criteria is as it was originally drafted many years ago.
I think it's fairly broad, and somebody who's a business leader, who's basically worked in arts or demonstrated leadership, I would think that you'd want someone who has some background in some sense with the arts, whether it's working with an arts-related nonprofit, which the ordinance is open to. In any case, we're, we're discussing a different issue tonight, which is to amend this, to, to amend the requirements for the person who's involved in the Glendale Unified or in higher education. So that's what the issue at hand is. So is there any discussion about that issue?
Glad to introduce the ordinance, A-B-One.
No, no, I don't have, no, I don't have any objections, I mean. But I, I do want to state that, for me, anyone who is willing to serve qualifies, especially with the arts, and anyone who's interested would have to love the arts for them to be interested as well. I don't think anyone would want to be on the Arts and Culture Commission who was, does not appreciate the arts. And why can't they be a homeowner, or a renter, or...
The only time I've seen that challenged was in the case of Mr. Hoffman.
Right.
Otherwise, I don't, I've never heard of anybody else been, so I think council always has the option of...
Right, right, right. So I want to relate to Mr. Mohill that I don't think these are hard and fast rules that are followed rigidly. I think the council has the leeway to point someone who is interested in the arts and might not be an artist, so...
Well, I'm an engineer, and I'm passionate about art.
Once you've made a statement that you are an artist, so...
I am, yeah.
There you go.
All right, he's made that statement.
I, I would suggest, however, Madam Mayor, members of council, that there's true interest in trying to broaden the criteria here, so that you don't run into the potential discord that occurs when you do have somebody that may not fit these criteria, and that another person that wants to do it, we can bring it back.
I'm okay with that. I think everyone's okay with it.
Passionate is a word.
I'm okay with it, but I would, I would like to make, and this is the problem we ran into here, I would like to at least have some of the members be people from the arts community, because they bring an expertise and a knowledge that people that are just interested in the arts don't necessarily have. So I think they do need that guidance. In the same way with the design review board, we have to have an architect, and we have to have, so, but I would think that's a discussion, does that, does that issue have to be agendized separately, or can that take part of this particular discussion?
It was only on the agenda to modify it for the qualification. Actually, the, the agenda language is broad.
Okay.
What we brought here for you is a little narrower. We probably can bring it back next week if we have enough time to make the modifications. It appears to be germane.
Why don't we make a modification to allow for that, but to have some minor, some, some requirement for a certain number? And I would, I would acquiesce to either the commission themselves to discuss this, or to the planning staff who oversees the board, to kind of come up with what that minimum would be, and if we... Oh, you don't, I'm sorry.
No, this, this is Community Services and Parks.
To, to, so maybe, maybe between now and whenever you come back, you can give us what you think.
We'll bring this ordinance back next week. What we'll do is then we'll send it out to, we'll, Parks and, or Community Services and Parks, and see if we can come up with a criteria in another report.
And I believe that also some of the commissions have language that doesn't make it a requirement, but makes it recommended that people, so that would be okay with me.
Remember, passionate is like substantial. It's a word that's very broad, covers everything. And one last thing, nomination can be made by any of us, but it's the council as a whole with a majority that decides if that's the right person. So if we think somebody's nominated doesn't fit the bill, be perfectly happy to write to vote no, if we're so inclined.
Mr. Howard, and then Mr. Menuchaian.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I was going to say, given your comment about just possibly leaving these criteria, but just make them recommended, we could make those minor modifications between now and next Tuesday easily.
Well, my feeling would be that you actually should have some as a requirement, because you can have a lot of passion for something. I don't think we have any questions, Mr. Mohill.
I just want to say, someone with a business background...
Sorry, you're, you're out of order, thank you. You can have a lot of passion, but sometimes if you don't have the experience, you can kind of run in circles and try to reinvent the wheel. And I think it's important to have at least some members that do have that experience working in that profession.
And with, if, again, if that were the case, we would have to probably take that back and have some discussion. It's a five-member commission.
I, I would like to tell Mr. Howard how to write the, the ordinance. If we can just add a sentence to that saying that this does not exclude individuals who are interested, and just finish with that.
Who are passionate.
Who are interested and passionate about the arts. So that would, that would, I think, cover most of the concerns that I relayed. And I, you know, Mr. Howard, I don't want to do this all the time, writing the ordinances for you, but just for today, I will.
He won't be here for very long.
I certainly appreciate, I certainly appreciate the assistance.
Maybe you could put him for the job.
No, that, that job I don't want.
In terms of the other issues tonight about education, if you're going to be bringing the entire ordinance back, I still, and this is maybe I'm the only one on the council that feels this way, I would still like to find room for someone in education to be involved in this commission, whether or not they're a commissioner, or an advisory member, or even someone who...
Volunteers.
Or a volunteer, but I am uncomfortable removing education, GUSD, or Glendale Community College from the equation completely.
Have, have no fear. My nominee does.
Yeah, I agree, though. I think there does have to be a tie-in with the school district and the community college. I mean, they have art programs, active programs, and it'd be foolish not to have them involved.
And my nominee does, and look at his resume next week.
Mr. Starburn.
Well, I'm going to suggest you have a provision that if none of the formal positions are filled with somebody who meets that standard, then, then an individual who does could be invited to serve as an advisor liaison to the commission. Otherwise, you're going to have the same issue you have with DRB, and that is because you have five members and five nominations, somebody's going to end up having to meet a particular restriction.
We could also, could we also put in language that gives preference, that if there's no other, if there's an applicant who does represent GUSD or Glendale Community College, that they be given some preference?
We, we could.
Doesn't it have to lock anyone in?
Yeah, and then that's the thing, that was part of the reason we brought this back to you, because the conundrum you face where a council member newly elected is tied to the appointment of a previous council member, which may have been someone with a specific expertise in this case, or a particular tie-in to a, like in this case, a school district. And Mr. Menuchaian was essentially saddled with that, and there was a, a kind of a fundamental fairness issue. But if he wasn't, then Mr. Weaver was saying, well, wait a minute, how am I, why am I now saddled with that? And so there was a, a fairness issue, and sort of jettisoning that specific requirement. But we could indicate, as we've noted here, it's desirable, so we can, you know, prefer...
Again, you may end up without, desirable means you may end up with five individuals, none of whom represent what you have an interest in having represented.
If it ends up causing a problem on the commission, they come back and say they can't function because they don't have anybody like that, future council can look at it again.
I'm sure they can function, but my worry is sort of cutting off GCC or GUSD. I mean, we already have sort of this gap between our different sort of governmental bodies, and this is a way to have, at least in this case...
You do have two ex officio student members that are appointed by the commission, and implication is that they're going to be students that have a Glendale school. But you're, you're correct. It could ultimately be that the five appointed commissioners do not have any tie to either the school district, the community college, or an ed, or an educational institution of higher learning.
Well, I am a little surprised that we haven't heard from it, GUSD or GCC on this issue, but maybe between now and then, I'll, I can reach out and see if they have an opinion. They may not be interested, so, or they may have a strong opinion one way or the other. But, so we'll be bringing this back next week?
It'll be back next week as it's been introduced. It'll be back next week for adoption. And again, unless I hear from three councilors about a quick, simple change that would make the criteria as an artist, designer, or business community leader, stewardship, just to make it recommended, or, you know, preferred but not required.
I, I would be most comfortable with having some basic, some base, some minimum of people on that commission. I don't know what that number is. I don't know if it's one, two, or three, that have to be working in the arts. I don't think that we'd have a stronger commission if you had five people who were just interested in the arts, but had absolutely no practical experience working in the arts, had never curated, created a show, didn't know what the economics was of the arts industry. I think they need that guidance. But I completely agree that that shouldn't be the criteria for every member, that you can have a lot, that a person who's just interested and maybe comes from a different field might bring a perspective that would be fresh and, and, you know, a good perspective to that board.
That's, that would be a conversation for another day.
Okay.
Because that would be, something that you would have to flat, kind of flesh through and determine whether it's one, two, or three, or...
Well, there's certainly a precedent with the DRBs where you have to have an architect. You still have that same issue where someone is, you could say, burdened with having to appoint an architect. But I haven't heard anybody suggest, and I think it would be really wrong-headed, to say, let's just get rid of that requirement on that board. I think this is also a commission that needs some expertise, that can't just function with interested people, at least to its full potential. So that would be, that's my opinion, but, you know, we can have a further discussion about this.
I think council members who feel strongly about that issue can actually appoint individuals who are first in the arts.
Well, I'm not worried about...
Council members always have the option of doing that.
That's right, but we're not always going to be here, and there may be councils that choose not to do that, and...
Future councils can change the ordinance.
They can, but we, you know, we can come...
Remember, design review, you're talking about professionals, architects, engineers, landscape architects. Arts, yeah, you can get a degree in art, but it's a much broader field than a technical field, so, but that's for another day. I introduce the ordinance for this for today.
It'll come back as is, and what I'm hearing is perhaps the need somewhere down the road for a report on possibly further modifications to the language in the ordinance.
Okay.
Are you going to add my sentence to that?
No, that's not the direction I have from the majority of the council.
Well, I, I'm okay with, with adding that, that a person like that can serve.
The point, though, that you are making is you still want it mandatory, whether it's one person or two, that has to be someone in the arts.
That's right. So can't we, can't we have our cake and eat it too? Can't we find a way to incorporate?
We, we have to probably go back to the stove and, and the counter and actually remix that up to determine how exactly we're going to have that cake.
Thank you for continuing that metaphor. I appreciate that.
That is the issue that brought us here.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay. I think that this is worth further discussion when the ordinance comes back.
And we'll put together a report.
Then, well, hold on. Then we'll put in a separate report, or we're going to hold off on the matter?
No, I think we put them in a separate report. This should be done now. It's a quick, it's a, what I'll call the, the quick fix, the, the instantaneous problem.
What may likely happen, though, is you will have five seats then likely filled, none of whom will meet the mayor's interests here.
Well, well, no, there's only, there's only two.
Right now, the criteria is that you have to be an artist or a business leader with...
Currently is. Currently. This would change that.
No, no, this, this, what we do next week is only about the educational...
Correct.
Representative. We'll come back later and try to hash this together.
Right, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the ordinance has been introduced. Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Thank you. My first speaker is Rick Larson, to be followed by Pamela Ton.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, council members. I just want to remind people, next week, there's a proposed gymnasium project, the Chameleons School, that is being brought before you next week. That's why I'm already out there, it's watching now, that, that it gets put out there, that that is going to be on the agenda next week. Let's see, a meeting the day after Memorial Day. I would also like to request that Councilman Menuchaian recuse himself from that vote due to the fact that his children attend Chameleons School. And that would be a request from, from us, that he would recuse himself from that vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to come back to Pamela Ton and go to Barry Allen, followed by Lynn Myers.
Ms. Ton.
Well, I've already called them, so...
Good evening, council, mayor, staff. I'm Barry Allen, and the comments I'm going to make are within the purview of this legislative body. Tomorrow, we're going to have budget study session. We're going to be looking at seven different city departments. Now, the last budget study session, one person from the public spoke, he was given three minutes, and was told that was the only time that he could speak. Now, each of these city departments, these city, seven city departments, will have people representing them, different people, not one person. The city manager isn't presenting all seven departments. He has his subordinates to do it. People are more familiar with each of the departments. You don't have the fire department representing the police department. And I'm suggesting, Madam Mayor, that you take it on your prerogative as the mayor who sets the agenda, to allow a speaker to speak on each of those seven departments. And I think that is what's fair, because we need the public representation, because there are some very, very serious issues that we're going to be looking at tomorrow, including an entire change in the fire rescue ambulance business. We're going to be looking at some severe, severe changes in the area of recommended rate increases, things that will actually change this, the complexity and the complexion of the city. I ask you to consider that, and that you make that decision tomorrow to allow speakers to speak on each topic. Thank you. Now, excuse me. Next week, or the week after, we'll be making, this is a complaint that has gone to the district attorney and the Kamala Harris from the state attorney general, and we'll be presenting this complaint as a public document to city clerk Sackian. So it will be available to everyone in the city to be able to review this document. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you. Lynn Myers, followed by Pamela Ton.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, council members and staff. My name is Lynn Myers. With reference to the last council meeting, and in regard to nominations and appointments, it was very shocking to hear Councilmember Menucha state that if you go back on any one of our commissioners, they would have something that could be used against them to prevent them from serving. The only other time I have ever heard anything so outrageous is when a local crime thug, up for a few things like extortion and Medicare fraud, et cetera, got in someone's face to say, everybody does it, don't they? And he was told, no, everybody doesn't do it. In addition, Mr. Menucha proceeded to state that it was unethical for the members of the dais to question any of his nominees. The real issue, Mr. Menucha, is that it is unethical for council members to nominate and appoint individuals who are unfit to serve. The information we have on Aram Kazazian and Vartan Garpetian, and outlined in an investigative report by the city, and an investigative report in the news media, I would be happy to read any of this to you, would clearly indicate that these individuals are unfit to serve on our city commissions. This is an outrage, Mr. Menucha, and to sit on that dais and attempt to deflect from your poor judgment by saying, they just don't like me, and they are vindictive, is purely And, Mr. Quintero, you stated at the last council meeting that you feel it is up to the individual council members to appoint whomever they wish. You stated that the council member's interest would rise and fall on that appointee, and if he appointed a total idiot, it would reflect on him, which brings me to one of your appointees, another Menucha, a Mr. Sam Menucha, who sits on our civil service commission. This is the individual who allowed filming and the use of explosives on his property that partially destroyed the building, and then he left it in this half demolished condition with a few old boards nailed here and there. It was reported today in the news media that our own city found it necessary to file a 19-count criminal complaint in Superior Court against Mr. Menucha, a civil service commissioner, who will be arraigned on June 21st. Aram Kazazian, Vartan Garpetian, Sam Menucha, beyond outrage and absolutely unacceptable.
Thank you. Pamela Ton, followed by Del McCursh.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members and Staff. My name is Pamela Ton, and I'm here to express my strong opposition to the library department's proposed transfer of the Chevy Chase Branch Library to Community Services and Parks, to be used as a rental venue with minimal library presence. I, along with many of my fellow Canyon residents, value our library and have invested much time, effort, and personal resources to keep it open and vibrant. When the city voted to create this branch back in 1972, it was never with the intention of drawing large public numbers, but rather to serve the needs of a community that is geographically isolated and had virtually no public services. This branch is like a rural outpost that provides a vital service to the unique needs of our community. There's no public transportation through the canyon, and despite our many requests to put a sign at the entrance of the canyon, no signage exists to let others know that it exists in the canyon. Even within our own community, it's, the attendance has been impacted because of the continual reduction in hours, a collection that is severely outdated. We have also asked for Armenian language and Korean language books, but none of that has been delivered, and a library that is also long overdue and in need of a facelift. In 2008, the Department of Libraries proposed to close our library. Community residents fought hard to keep it open, and with your support, it remained open. Many volunteers partnered with Glen Oaks Elementary School to bring more families to the library. We produced our own events, introduced a program called Read Foreign Score, which encouraged kids to read books and visit the library. Partly in response to our success with the families, in 2009, Ms. Cleary proposed to the community that our branch be rebranded as a children and families, family library, much the way Brown Library is a music and arts library. To help achieve this, there would be a book sale to sell off the outdated books from our collection and raise money to purchase new children's books and update our adult collection. Capital funds allocated by the city would be used to renovate our kitchen, paint the interiors, and purchase new kid-friendly furniture. We were very excited and committed to helping realize this vision. Despite our reservations about selling our books, in September 2009, we were instrumental in doing outreach to the community for the sale and literally rolled up our sleeves and helped sell off our collection. We even held a bake sale to help raise more funds to achieve this new vision. What we didn't expect was a complete, almost a complete liquidation of our collection, including many classics and first editions that were bought by professional booksellers. Over 60% of our books were sold off or gotten rid of. Soon after that, our shelves were removed. A week later, our hours were reduced, all programming was eliminated, we are the only branch in the library system without any programming, and our sole librarian was transferred and our computers and periodicals reduced. Our library is a shell of its former self, gutted, decimated, and open only 11 hours a week. We find it completely ironic that Ms. Cleary justifies this proposed transfer by citing low circulation. With our lack of resources, our volunteers had to work twice as hard. We, each week, we produce programming, read stories, invite guest speakers, including authors, scientists, animators, and have produced many exciting cultural events. We continue to do outreach with Glen Oaks Elementary and the Chevy Chase Estates Association. Our events regularly draw up to 100 visitors at a time, and despite the near dismantling of our library, circulation has actually increased over the past eight months. In December alone, our circulation increased by 96% over the last year, so our numbers are actually going up. We have repeatedly asked when the books, paint job, and furniture will arrive. We rarely get any answers. After a year and eight months, only a partial kitchen renovation has taken place, and despite $7,700 being raised from the book sale, it appears only a handful of books have replaced the thousands that we lost. I'm going to wrap it up soon. As a reward for all this community volunteer work and goodwill, the library now proposes that our branch be transferred to a department that has neither the expertise nor the inclination to run a library. We believe this transfer will spell the end of our library. We also feel betrayed. It currently costs $28,000 to operate the Chevy Chase branch. We ask you, do Chevy Chase and Glen Oaks Canyons and other residents not deserve the small slice of the library budget pie? I ask that you reject this proposal to transfer our library to Community Services and Parks, and have the library department make good on its promises to update our collection, implement capital improvements, and preserve our library as a library. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Del McCursh, followed by Louise Phelan.
Oh, okay, so Louise, followed by Beatrice Magellan. Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Louise Phelan, and I am here on behalf of the Casa Verdugo Library, and I just wanted to make you aware that we have started a petition, friends of the library, and in the past two days, we've gotten over 200 signatures. And everyone we spoke with had positive things to say, that they were so happy to have their voices heard and their feelings, and it's so important for them to have this library in their community that they can walk to. I would like to share two quotes that are above the doors of the library. The first one is, "No man was ever wise by chance." And the second one is, "It is never too late to learn. Please help us keep our library open." Thank you.
Thank you. Just because we have some new people here tonight, we give our comments at the end of the evening, at the end of the oral communications, if there are going to be any comments. Please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, my name is Beatrice Magellan, council members and staff. I was coming today to speak to you because I had a neighbor come over to ask for a signature about our Casa Verdugo Library, and my daughters said to me, mommy, you've got to go speak. They've been going to this library since they were babies. They're now 11 and 10, honor students, excellent students due to the library. We haven't had a computer at home, and we didn't want to have a computer. We go to our library in our community. Our daughters pick up books, they've been picking up books since they were kids, 30 books, 20 books, they're excellent readers due to the library that we've had in our community. They know the librarians, they ask her for help on their reports, they come in, they ask for references, movies, resources, anything that they possibly could want, they go to the Casa Verdugo Library. They've never wanted to go to the other libraries. We've gone to the other libraries, but they say, mommy, we've got to go back to our library. This is their home, this is their library that they visit four to five times a week. I can't see my daughters and our family in our community not having our library there. So if you can please support us, continue to provide the funding to keep our library open. I strongly support it. I know that the staff that works there, they're very welcoming to everyone who walks into the door, they have all of the materials available to us, and it's been a wonderful and tremendous asset for me and my family and our community, and I think it has served the students in this area very well. I know that we see our neighbors there, we've made new friends there, and so I would hope that you consider, continue the funding for our Casa Verdugo Library. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Herbert Milano, followed by Mike Mohill.
Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano, and in a minute, I'll have a couple of visuals that I'd like to present to you. I would like to propose for your consideration during the budget study sessions, that you request that the finance department provide the city council and the public with long-term trends and graphs to make the information more easily accessible and understood. And I'd like to exemplify that with the following graph on a couple of macroeconomic trends on asset valuations. There are bubbles that occurred in the economy in the last 12 years. This information is taken from different sources, the Federal Housing Finance Authority and the NASDAQ information from Yahoo Finance. We have, in the last 12 years, two major trends. The green one exemplifies the stock market bubble that occurred in 1998 and 99, and the city, and cities throughout California took action with regard to increasing the pensions based on that bubble trend, and a burden that we are significantly impacting the city's budgets of local California government. The other bubble, the one on the red trend, is the housing bubble, and this city council, the city council in 1995, increased the pension of miscellaneous employees, meaning other than safety employees significantly, and also increased the payroll based on that particular asset bubble as it was climbing. The other decision in 1900, 2001, took place after the, the asset bubble was already deflating significantly. What I'd like to state is that unless we look at major trends of the economy nationally and regionally, then it makes many of your decisions, if you don't look at a snapshot in time, that's very precarious. I would like to also present how that would imply with regard to the, let's say, the police budget if you were to consider it along the same trend lines. We have here a police department whose purpose is to create a meaningful performance scorecard on their jobs of responding, preventing, and solving crime. Next slide. The traditional measures have been resident per officer, response time, and service of public perception. I think these typical historical approaches to measures are insufficient and biased. I would like to introduce you to meaningful measures used by many other entities, other police departments and counties. One of them is Orange County. Violent crime rate trends, property crime rate trends, and other public safety trends such as traffic safety, pedestrian safety, injuries. Next slide. The measures of effectiveness would be violent, violent crime clearance, property crime clearance, homicide clearance, and burglary clearance as the measures of performance. Next slide. These are the other types of domestic crime for which we have general information at the Department of Justice. Next slide. Some leading indicators would be the number of evictions with regard to financial problems, meaning that as the economy tanks, the impact on low-income families is pretty severe, and they eventually have some impact on crime trends, like the number of evictions, dropout rates, single-parent head of households, electrical bills in arrears. This gives you an impact of how the economy locally impacts eventually, and may have an impact on crime. Next slide. But here we have the police salaries and maintenance and operation costs since the year 2000. You have a fairly significant climb with regard to how much is costing the city when you look at it as a trend line. Next slide. But this is the property crime rate from the Department of Justice, and you can see that this particular downward trend has remained fairly flat since the year 2001. In other words, since 2001, the property crimes have generally remained flat while the cost to maintain it at that level has climbed significantly more than doubled. Next slide. I think that the role of the city council with regard to this is to evaluate past performance, establish major objectives, set key performance measures, and approve policy and initiatives with regard to all the information that is being presented to you. Next slide. There we go. Thank you very much. What I would like to present to you is that unless we look at those trends and those costs for police and fire and other departments, and without looking at the impact of the trends, we're going to be facing with more tough decisions where it is the community loses parks and recreation, libraries, and other funding that is essentially crucial for you to evaluate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My last card is Mike Mohill. If there's anybody else who wishes to speak, please turn your card in now.
Thank you, Mayor Friedman and council members. Name is Mike Mohill. Memorial Day celebration, I rarely speak publicly about my military experience in Vietnam because I feel lucky to be one of the soldiers who returned home in one piece and in one's mind, in sound mind. I was in my early twenties, naive and fresh out of college, when I volunteered for the Army. The politicians called Vietnam a conflict, but to the soldiers on the ground, it was war. When talking about the war, I would say to family and friends, I was a lover and never soldier. When I was discharged, there was no military parade for me and my comrades in arms, as it was just best to blend into society and move on with one's lives. I was one of the lucky ones who were able to make the transition. I knew, on the other hand, many soldiers came home with limbs gone, drug addicted, and broken-hearted. About four years ago, I visited the Veterans Hospital in the Valley, and I saw an establishment that made me want to cry. Acres of rundown buildings and landscaping, the complex was old and, because of politics and government neglect, reminded me I was lucky to have been able to transition to civilian life and live comfortably. At the VA hospital were hundreds of people with serious problems, unlike me, being pushed around in wheelchairs, crutches, and sadness in their eyes. Why wasn't this country honoring these heroes with an environment that was new and cheerful and not old and neglected? Two years ago in the newspaper, I read where a city, where the city of Burbank was honoring a local hero by dedicating a city park in his honor. Corporal Larry Leonard Maxim had received the Congressional Medal of Honor for heroism while serving in Vietnam. I never knew Corporal Maxim, but I did something I had never done before. I got involved and went to Pacific Park and became one person in a crowd of hundreds honoring an individual I had never, never met. As Memorial Day is just around the corner, I am reminded every Tuesday evening how lucky I am to be able to appear before my city council and staff and tell the members how I feel on the different issues. The other evening was no different, and I am sure for the thousands of other citizens throughout our country doing the same thing. We know we live in a democracy where we could not be put in jail for not agreeing with our elected officials. I approached the speaker's stand. I approached the speaker's stand and looked right into the eyes of my five elected council members. As with my eyes contact, I reminded our council members how lucky we all are for all the Corporal Maxmans who gave their lives so we can be free to disagree. This Memorial Day, I would be honored if the good citizens of Glendale paused for just one moment and say a prayer for all the Corporal Maxmans who made it possible to be living in a free country despite all its warts and shortcomings. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any council comments or responses? Mr. Menucha?
I have comments and responses. Just for the record, the name Menucha is as common in the Armenian language as the name Smith is in the English language, just for the record. Second, if you're so inclined at digging up dirt on commissioners, there are commissioners that had building code violations before. There were commissioners who had DUI before. If your motivation is not racially motivated, if your issue is not, where were you when these individuals were in front of the council? So I again want to thank you for coming out and invite you to come out and berate me again next week, but that doesn't change my constitutional right as an elected official to nominate whom I want, who I think is suitable to represent me on commissions. Outside of that, I would like to wish my fellow veteran Happy Memorial Day. And I am a veteran as well, and I look forward to seeing all of you to the memorial events over the weekend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
I'll start with the library. We haven't made any decisions, and I do appreciate all the emails that I've received on Casa Verdugo specifically, but we haven't made any decision in terms of closing any of the libraries. It'll probably be a number of weeks before any decisions are reached. Then on the issue, well, and for another speaker that happened to point out the NASDAQ, let's use a New York Stock Exchange. It wasn't quite so weighted in terms of tech and dot com. That particular speaker inevitably will use the right statistics to prove his point every time. Would have been a more fair comparison to use the New York Stock Exchange rather than the NASDAQ. On the issue of commission appointees, or rather, council member appointees, I've voted for many members, if I didn't make it clear the last time I spoke on this, which I thought were horrible choices. I thought they were horrible choices for the specific commissions that a particular council member was appointing them to. But I went ahead and approved that person's choice because it's their right to do that. They were elected by the voters of Glendale. They're elected officials. If they want to appoint someone to a commission, then, like I mentioned the last time, it rises and falls on their commission appointees, period. Then on Mr. Menucha, Sam Menucha specifically, in fact, he's a very reputable member of this community, has been around for years. He grew up here. He volunteered on I don't know how many committees, including a lot of work with the police department. Did he make a mistake on this property? Yes, I believe he did make a mistake. And although he has rectified it over the weekend, it's been painted, cleaned up, cleared up. But he now will have to face the consequences in the next few weeks. But Mr. Menucha has been a very active member of the community. He's done a wonderful job on the Civil Service Commission, and I'm very happy that I appointed him. I think he's serving his second term, if I'm not mistaken. But, second term. But anyway, he's been around for a long time. He's a fairly young man, but he's done a lot of good work in this city.
Thank you.
Just, I'm sorry, I forgot one item which Mr. Quintero reminded me, and that's the library issue. I made it clear that I was not in support of the cuts that the library had suggested, including closing the libraries. So I've received a number of emails as well. Thank you for the emails, but I am opposed to the cuts and the closing of libraries, just so we're clear.
First, in terms of the libraries, I would like to know from staff in terms of the change with Chevy Chase Library and having it be under the auspices of parks and community service, I'd like to know what that means in terms of the services that it will offer. Because we haven't had that, you know, we haven't had that level of detail. Is it going to operate pretty much as it's been operating, but just have a different manager? Will there be totally new use for that library? I'd like to hear more about that before I can make a decision either way. Because I agree, the community has done a lot there in terms of volunteering and running a lot of that library themselves. And I'd like to be able to, for them to continue to do that, at the very least. So I need to know more about those details. And in terms of Casa Verdugo, I'm against the closing of that library. It's my, I've walked to that library myself and used it, and I know how many people use it. And I'll do whatever I can in my power to make sure that doesn't happen. Now, I'm not against all cuts for the library because I think that there are efficiencies that can be gained in every department. But we are still at the very early stages of going through department by department. And so what you hear proposed by staff by no means is adopted by council until we get to the place where we're actually adopting budgets. And there's going to be reconfiguring, I believe. But I will say that there will be painful cuts. There are no cuts, there are very few cuts, I will say, or maybe even no cuts in this budget that aren't going to hurt someone. So whether it's library or some other service that's, whatever it is, somebody out there considers it essential. And I just want to be sure the community understands that I think that that's what is coming down the road, that there will be painful cuts. I hope that there are ways around that. I hope we can find savings within the departments. But I don't think we can cut our way to $18 million in a budget shortfall, unfortunately. And last, I do think that Mr. Allen raises a valid point about speakers for the budget, and I will allow speakers to speak on each department. However, I will demand that they speak specifically on that department budget and not rehash the same material over and over. So I will be strict about that because we are on a very short timeframe. It's going to be difficult to get through a lot of these budget meetings. So as long as the comments are germane specifically to that department and not just, "We're paying our employees too much," yada, 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 I think we got that point. I'd like to hear comments specifically on programs and cuts within each department. We have new business?
Yes. I'd like to move that the claim of Philip Robinson Perkins be compromised and resolved for the full and complete amount of $15,000, and the same is hereby approved and accepted. And the finance director is authorized to issue a warrant and set some payable to the claimant for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution of a settlement and release agreement.
Second. Call call.
Council members, Menucha?
Yes.
Magallum, Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. And with that, I would like, whoever makes the motion to adjourn, that we adjourn in the memory of Dave Edgar Behringer.
Aye, so moved.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all.